We'd like to go ahead and call for order for the public meeting for the Planning Commission. Today is November tenth, two thousand and twenty-one. First off, I'll go ahead and, Commissioner Masia, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
All right. Right hand over your heart. And begin, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now I'll go ahead and ask for the Secretary to take oral call, please.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Penya?
Present.
Commissioner Vasquez?
Here.
Commissioner Escobosa?
Here.
Commissioner Vice Chair Masia Junior?
Here.
Madam Chair Valenzuela?
Here.
Thank you. At this moment, I'll go ahead and open up for oral communications.
Yes, Madam Chair, we do not have anyone for oral communications.
Perfect, thank you very much. At this moment, I'll go ahead and close oral communications. And then now we'll move on to consent calendar, please. And first off is item number one. Okay, at this moment, I'll go ahead and if there are no objections on the minutes, I'll go ahead and motion to pass.
I'll second that.
Thank you. And do we do oral call for this one or? No? Okay, then we'll go ahead and move on to item number two. Thank you.
City Attorney, would you like to make comment for closed session?
Yes, we did conduct a closed session earlier today and there was no action taken.
No final action taken?
Correct, no action taken.
So there's no reportable action, thank you.
Correct, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and moving on to item two of Associate Planner Melissa Chipris will be presenting.
Before staff begins their presentation, I did want to make a note on a few items that were printed incorrectly on the agenda packets that you were provided. So to begin, on the staff report, it does say that the staff report is from City Attorney Robert Tafoya and it should state that it's from City Attorney Julia Silva. Staff didn't want to make that note. Also, in the resolution that was provided to you, there is a portion that refers to the application as a facility to manufacture adult and/or medical cannabis products and it should refer only to manufacturing and cultivation cannabis. So that's for the resolution. And also finally, in the ordinance that was provided to you in your agenda packets also refers to item one under section two, indicates that the agreement requires a minimum of ten of the business workforce to consist of Baldwin Park residents and it should read that the applicant should make only a good faith effort to hire ten Baldwin Park residents for the business. Thank you.
Thank you.
So to begin, the case before you is Development Agreement DA twenty-one dash oh-two. The applicant is Don Verde LLC and is requesting to establish a new manufacturing and cultivation cannabis facility.
Madam Chair, if you don't mind, before you move on, point of information, please.
I'm sorry, repeat that, I didn't catch that.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. If you don't mind, before you move on, may I speak on a point of information?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Julia Silva is special counsel as opposed to city attorney and it is correct that I didn't have anything to do with the staff report or this agenda item. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much.
Proceed, staff. Thank you. Next slide, please, Mark. Okay, so the applicant is proposing the cultivation and manufacturing facility at one three zero seven five Garvey Avenue. The subject site is located within the IC industrial commercial zone and has an approximate lot area of fifteen thousand five hundred and thirty-eight square feet with a building footprint of approximately five thousand twenty-eight square feet. Next slide. The applicant is proposing to utilize a total of approximately seven thousand seven hundred and eighty-two square feet of the existing two-story commercial building. The interior of the existing building will undergo tenant improvements on the first and second floor to modify the space for the purposes of cultivation and manufacturing of cannabis. Next slide, please. The Planning Division has reviewed the application to ensure compliance with all requirements set forth in Cannabis Ordinances fourteen forty-two and fourteen forty-three. The location is within the required zone district and is at a distance greater than six hundred feet from a school, childcare facility, youth center, or park and is a distance greater than twenty-five feet from a dwelling unit within a residential zone. A certified survey was included in the application at the request of staff for verification. And here you can see on the screen, staff also compiled a map indicating the distances between the proposed cannabis facility and the closest residential structures. So if you note on the screen, the green line to the right of the screen is a, that is the closest residential structure, which is at sixty-three feet from the building and the blue lines are the nearest residential accessory structures. So that includes a storage and garages ranging from fifty feet to sixty-one feet in distance from the proposed cannabis facility. Next slide, please. So to conclude, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution PC twenty-one thirteen to recommend to the City Council to adopt ordinance fourteen sixty-five and approve DA twenty-one dash oh-two. This concludes staff's presentation and the applicant is present for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, perfect, thank you. At this moment, I'd like to open it up for a public hearing. Anybody in favor of the item?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have four people who have requested to be called for public comment on this item.
Okay.
Let's try the first one.
Staff, if I may, on the actual resolution that I have in front of me on the computer, I have that it's ordinance fourteen forty-two. You stated fourteen sixty-five.
Okay.
If I may answer that question, fourteen forty-two is your current cannabis ordinance in the city? This ordinance is a new ordinance for this particular project, it's fourteen sixty?
Fourteen sixty-five, thank you.
Okay. For this particular project.
Okay.
And as a point of information, Commissioner, each development agreement must have its own ordinance. So we have a general ordinance, a cannabis ordinance as referenced by Ms. Silva and then this particular ordinance that goes with the development agreement has a different number. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Okay, thank you, Commissioners. We will put now on Speaker Katie Podine. Okay, you can speak.
Hi, Katie Podine here with Clark Howell LLP. I represent Don Verde LLC. I'll be here to answer any legal questions about the development agreement or legal operations of the business.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Katie.
Thank you.
I'll be calling the next caller. Anna Bullard?
To people that apply for licenses that shouldn't get it. The other thing is that my biggest concern is to make sure that the neighborhood is protected from people coming to the neighborhood to get stuff on the business that, from the cannabis that is being created, making sure that nothing happens to the residents of Baldwin Park. That apply for licenses that shouldn't get it. The other thing is that my biggest concern is to make sure that the neighborhood is protected
If you can mute your computer?
Into the neighborhood to get- If I could what?
If you can mute your computer because we're getting-
I know, it's talking to me. Being created, making sure that nothing happens to the residents of Baldwin Park. Apply for licenses that shouldn't get it. The other thing is that my biggest concern is to make sure that- Okay, I'll walk away. And then the other thing is, can you address how this is going to help? How is this going to hinder the values of the properties in that area? Is it going to affect it? How do we find out? It's by having this type of business so close to the homes. I mean, some of them are fifty, fifty-three and fifty-six and one thirty-nine feet away from the business. Is that going to hinder the values of those properties by having that type of business there? Sorry, I don't know how to shut my computer, maybe I'll turn it off.
Anna, you have about ten seconds left to wrap up your comments.
Okay, that's all my questions. I don't have my comments. I wanted to make sure that the neighborhood is protected and the people are safe and that's it.
Thank you, Anna. Your time is up. Okay, I will proceed to contact our third person for public communication is Lisa Jan.
Okay, I can speak right now?
Yes, you can.
Okay, first, this decision will have been in touch from our community safety. Second, we don't want to have the elementary school and kindergarten close to the building because it's not a good environment for our kids healthy. Third, as owners, it's not a good thing to that it's right behind our house only fifty feet because we have a very young kids. And finally, we wish city cannot only pay improved tax. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, Commissioners, I will now proceed to call our last person for public communication, Luis Osorio.
Thank you.
Okay, Luis, you have three minutes.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission and staff. My name is Luis Osorio. I'm a land use planner with JRG Attorneys in Salinas. And our office worked with the applicant, Don Verde, and the owner, Mr. Kurt Parra, in putting the application together that is before you tonight. I'm here to assist the owner in answering any questions that the commission may have of the operations and the plan and et cetera. If I may, just to address a couple of concerns that were mentioned by the callers earlier. The number one is the lady expressed concern about protecting the neighborhood. This facility is not a dispensary and there is not going to be any public or anybody from the outside coming in into the facility. The only people visiting the facility will be the employees. They will be coming, they will come into the facility, go inside, do the cultivation and, you know, go about their business and they will leave. They'll be there during regular business hours and that's going to be it. There's not going to be any people coming in and out of the facility during, you know, any time, actually. The property and the facility is located within the setbacks required by the municipal code and they're including location, you know, beyond six hundred feet from schools and any other public uses. And so I just wanted to address that. Again, I'm here to assist the owner in responding any questions that may come up from the Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you. That was all we had for communications, for hearings, correct? Any other?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay. And, okay, so do we have any other, any hearings in favor? Anybody else? Okay. Anybody against it? Nope. Okay, so then I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this moment and then I'll open it up for discussion or open communication with my Commissioners. Any questions or concerns?
Can we have the applicant come up to the podium?
Kurt?
Turn on the button.
Kurt, can you press the blue button right below the, there you go, thank you.
Yeah, so good evening, thank you for, you know, taking the time to look at the development agreement with us tonight.
Mr. Parra, just for the record, can you address one of the concerns that the residents have in regards to safety?
Yeah.
And elaborate a little bit more as to how the facility will have security on premises?
You've got it. Yeah, so just a little background, I've been in the business since two thousand and fourteen. I came from a corporate background. But to address your question, so during those years, I got real smart about security because it was a much more risky environment back there. So the way I approach it is threefold. One is that I have an onsite security guard, usually eight to ten hours a day. I meet all the state required mandates around the number of cameras, you know, and the location of the cameras and we go above and beyond in terms of our cameras. And then what's most important to me is I utilize a third-party video surveillance firm that literally has human eyeballs on us every minute of the day and I've seen how that can thwart a attack from outside when ten, fifteen guys are coming at you. It can de-escalate a situation without having to engage a human inside, which can end up in a death. So it's a practical matter, that's the best solution for what I, from the experience that I have. So that's my approach to security and keep everyone safe.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, sir. On the security part, can you clarify more, what other than cameras are you going to be having?
Other than cameras? So onsite guard, eight to ten hours a day. And then we have human eyeballs. So the state required mandate and probably locally too, is that you have X number of cameras in certain rooms. It doesn't require anybody to be watching those in terms of outside service. So we have third-party eyeballs in Arizona watching everything that we're doing. At the end of every day, I got a summary of any unusual activity. So other than that, it's the standard protocol that I've used for the last, whatever, seven years.
Now, the security guards that you have, are you going to have, are they going to be, are you contracting with an outside company?
Yes, yes, sir.
Are you sure? What company is it?
So I use one in the city of Los Angeles right now and I'm not remembering the name of that firm. They're licensed bonded. Like I said, I use them in my Los Angeles facility, it's a licensed facility. So I'll be using, likely using that same firm.
And Madam Chair, Robert Tafoya, City Attorney. They also have to and are required to file a security plan as part of their application and as part of their, you know, paperwork that they do with the city. So you can find out, you know, the name of the security firm and so forth, usually in that application.
Perfect, thank you.
Sure, I have a question. So I know, assuming it was a resident or concerned individuals calling regarding the property values given that while there is a rear setback by, I believe it's the city or the state, can you provide us if, how it might, do you have any sort of insight until how the property values might change as a result of?
Yeah, so to answer your question very straightforwardly is that, no, I don't have that. And what we do is, and you can see from the facility, it's a brand-new facility, the owner's right behind me here. It's a beautiful facility and we intend to, you know, maintain it and keep it really, you know, beautiful. And so that will, you know, be good for the community. I think, you know, cannabis is new for the communities and I can understand the apprehension, but ultimately, we're a business-to-business operation and we're going to have a beautiful facility, so I really don't think it's going to degrade, you know, housing prices.
Right, thank you.
And Madam Chair and Mr. Commissioner, we did look at this back in two thousand and seventeen when we considered bringing cannabis into the city. Retail distribution, where you have people walking in and buying cannabis and walking out, that did have an impact on property values. That's why the city determined not to do that. The city does not have any retail distribution where people can walk in, buy cannabis and walk out. And in that, when we looked at that, just the manufacturing and the cultivation of marijuana and cannabis, which does not involve retail, which is essentially just like any other warehouse business. It's like a warehouse business where some, you know, cars or trucks come in, they will take product and they'll go out, just like they would do a flower shop or a grocery store or anything else. That did not have an impact on property values when we looked at it back in two thousand and seventeen.
Great, thank you, that's very helpful.
Just one other thing to Mr. Vasquez's question. So the third-party monitoring service we use is called SARC and I'll get back to you with the name of the security firm that we use onsite, the Human Capital.
Thank you.
Yeah, if I can add to that, I think in the ordinance we have it listed that the security guard they have to have on premises is an armed security guard, if I'm not mistaken, for the protection of-
Yes, our security guards are armed. Yes, our, our, our security guards are armed.
Thank you, Mr. Parra.
And it is important to note, Madam Chair and Commissioners, that the state requirements require video cameras, which the applicant has mentioned that he has. They seem to be going above and beyond the state requirement, which is they actually have somebody watching the video cameras 24 hours a day in order to determine what activity is going on. So this type of security plan is probably, along with the security guards, is probably the best type of security plan that you can possibly have and goes above and beyond state requirements.
I do have a question. To the best of your knowledge, will there be any chemicals which are known to be hazardous expelled into the environment and the surrounding areas?
No, there will not be any, there's be no level, PPM levels that would be harmful to anyone, not even traceable. On the manufacturing side, and on the manufacturing side, it's, it's, I'm not manufacturing for production. I'm manufacturing to understand about a strain that we bred, see how it does under a manufacturing environment, see how it performs. So first, just, that's, I think, important to note. But we use a closed-loop system. I contract out with one of the pioneers in the industry. So that's gonna be a small part of our operation, but even having said that, there are no contaminants released from that. You know, we're not allowed to use, generally, basically use pesticides, we're not allowed to use those. So we, we rely on extreme cleanliness, and we really focus on that throughout the facility to, to keep the pathogens out of the, out of the air. Because ultimately, you have to have a pathogen-free environment, and that's what we try to achieve.
And Madam Chair, one additional comment. They also have to file an air quality plan with their application. And that air quality plan requires pursuant to our municipal code that not only are there no toxins, but there can be no smell emanating from the facility. So they have to have a air quality plan that would require scrubbers and other kinds of filters that would not only prevent pathogens, but would prevent any smell whatsoever from emanating from the facility. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
Sir, I have a follow-up question on the security part. Is the security gonna be only eight to 10 hours, or is it gonna be 24 hours?
I've, what I've used in the past and to this day is eight to 10 hours onsite during business hours, armed security guard inside. After that, my, my SARC, third-party surveillance system takes over from the outside.
So there won't be no present security guard arm after business hours, is that what you're saying?
No, that's not my business practice. If that's something the city wants, I'm definitely open to that. But to date, I've never been robbed, I've had no experience of vandalism. Anything that's happened to me has been thwarted by the SARC.
I have a follow-up question to that. How are you collaborating with the local police department during the hours when the armed security is there, but also outside of those hours, when you're relying on the third-party surveillance?
So the third-party surveillance company immediately notifies local law enforcement if this, if something's happening. And then they try to talk the perpetrators down from doing what they're doing. That's, that works.
And in addition to that, Madam Chair, we also require pursuant to our municipal code that the video cameras be accessible to our police department such that our police department could look in and could view from their own, from the applicant's video camera, any activity in the, in the location. So they are required to coordinate with our police department so that their video cameras have a live feed with our police department.
And I guess another question on the security part. So, you know, point scenario that there's an emergency, would our police department have access right away to the security footage if needed?
Absolutely, yeah.
Well, I'm asking because you said that whoever's watching the cameras, they're not center here, they're out in Arizona, if I understood correctly?
Third-party virtual service, that's right. And I'm sorry, maybe I'm not, I'm misunderstanding your question.
So my question is, if our law enforcement or our police department needs access to the cameras of an emergency, our police department will have access to it right away, needed?
Yes, absolutely.
Commissioner Vasquez, just to add to that, as the city attorney had mentioned, the security system prior to oper, prior to receiving a certificate of occupancy for operation of the facility, the police department, that's one of the requirements that they request, a contact from the security company if anything did arise. And again, they are allowed remotely access 24 hours a day, seven days a week, to the security system.
Got it, thank you.
I have another question for you, Mr. Parra. You say we've done business in other cities. Can you mention those and how successful have those been?
Yes, so the two other businesses in California, both been in the city of Los Angeles. One was in the San Fernando Valley, and the other one is in South Central, off of Gage and McKinley. So I started with one in the San Fernando Valley. We were in the gray market at that point in time in 2014. I ended up getting that when LA City came out with their program. We stepped into that program, I got us licensed up in 2018, in 2018. Built that business up for about a year, year and a half, and then I sold my interest in that business, successfully sold that, that first operation. So left me with a real good taste in my mouth with cannabis. And ended up partnering with one of the most kind of prolific growers in the country. And we started with a facility in LA City. Licensed, got that licensed up too. And now we have, we're launching brands out of there. It really is the, the marketing piece and the showpiece for bringing in new investors and showing what we can do. And now we're, now we're, you know, taking that operation across the country. We have an operation in Massachusetts, a licensed operation. It will be live, plant's in the ground by mid-June next year. So, you know, we've kind of got a good handle on the business model. And the foundation for us is breeding and cultivation. We're a science-based company. My partner's a mathematician by trade. What's mostly gonna happen on those four walls in Balden Park is we're gonna be doing breeding, it's gonna be research and development around breeding. My intention is to take the three different businesses that I have in that, in those four walls, the nursery business, the breeding business, and the cultivation business. We're gonna incubate them in those four walls, and then, that place is far too small for a, for any one of those disciplines. The idea here is to incubate them there, and I'll make money doing that, then lift them out of there, stay within the city of Balden Park, because I have to, my license is here, and then grow those businesses at more appropriate facilities, so. More than you asked, but that's the game plan.
That's perfect, appreciate that. The other concern with the environment is the, the water system you guys are gonna have. Can you elaborate a little bit on that?
Yes. Do we have experience, I'm not the expert, expert in that area, my partner is, in setting up water filtration systems, because we had to do that in the city of LA, or at least we wanted to get ahead of it, because we know what's coming. We've instituted it there, so that's just good for water conservation. And then we use a very, kind of, I'd say very, to the, to the, to the T, your fertigation system, which basically feeds the plant. So we know kind of with a great deal of precision how much water each plant takes. And so there's not a whole lot of overwatering, because everything is, is kind of figured out centrally by a brain over here that tells us how much water and nutrients each plant gets. So that's our way of, you know, further monitoring or conserving water. Did that, that answer your question?
Yeah, my, my main concern is the runoff water into, into the system.
Okay.
I guess that, is that, the, the water system that you have, is it sophisticated enough to know exactly what runoff water's gonna be going into our system?
Yeah, I'll have to, I'll have to get you an exact answer on that. I'll have to come back with an exact answer on that.
I have no further questions.
Yes, sir, and Ron, maybe this is a staff question. For cameras, I'm concerned, safety is my number one priority for our community. That's why I keep bringing the same question. Ron, who's gonna be monitoring the cameras in our department here? Someone's gonna be assigned to that?
Yes, Commissioner Vasquez, from my understanding and working with the police department, there is a designated staff member in the police department that, if needed, has access to that security system. I'm not aware that there is a full-time where they're monitoring, as the applicant has indicated in their, the private company that they're hiring for the secure, for their security system. But does allow our, our police department to have access if needed. And that includes times where they will review some of the security cameras for those that are operating, depending on, on a schedule. They do it intermittently. But I can come back to the Planning Commission to provide a little more detail how they, how they monitor. But that is my understanding.
Thank you.
I have one last question. Are you able to share how many employees you plan on hiring? And this is for my own curiosity. What kind of positions will there be? And how can we potentially open those up to our community?
Yeah, sure. So that's really important to, to how I approach building a business. It's gonna reflect the community. If you were to see our facility in, in South Central, you'd, you'd see that. So it'll be up to 10 positions, it's a small facility. And they're gonna range from a cultivation manager, which is usually a science-based, degreed person for us. But then we have the opportunity below that person to have two to three cultivation techs, which don't have to be degreed. Those are people that can come from the local community. It's gotta be, you know, genuinely intrigued by the plant, get a lot of heart, and wanna, wanna work hard. So that would be, yeah, those are positions that could be hired locally. Trimming, so after the plant's harvested and you have to, you know, trim it. That will be another area where those are kind of entry-level positions that, again, could be hired locally too. And then a lot of it is, you know, what we're doing in there is gonna be basic farm labor. So we'll always be looking for those, those opportunities. But really, I think the, the exciting thing for somebody, you know, in this community, be brought in as a cultivation tech, and they catch the bug, and they wanna, you know, take that further up, that's an opportunity, it's a great, it's a great training ground. My partner is, he's a professor by trade, he's a math professor by trade. So our training program is very rigorous, and, you know, it's, it's a huge asset to somebody just getting off, starting off in the business.
Oh, I have a follow-up, and you, you may not be aware, but recently the Balden Park approved a tiny homes project for people experiencing homelessness. And they're working on a second project, actually, maybe 200 yards from the building that you're wanting to, to do your business in. And this is theoretical, would you potentially be open to some kind of vocational training partnership with these programs?
So yes, I have, I have some experience with that, some experience with re-entry. My experience tells me that that has to be done very carefully and one person at a time, especially in a smaller organization, but I'm open to that for sure. We are, Juan just reminded me that we've developed a concept in CD9 in LA City. It's a vertical farming, called controlled environmental agriculture. And basically, it's a plot of land that CD9's basically granting to us, where we're going to prop up a greenhouse and a small container-based indoor facility, a small, small outdoor area. It's not about growing weed, it's about teaching people how to farm, both indoors and then, you know, outside as well. And that's a curriculum, there's a curriculum behind that, there's an entire business plan behind that. And, and I can commit here that, you know, something that we can definitely do in the city of Balden Park, you know, with your help, because it takes a partnership on that. But we've, we've seen that happen in CD9. We're, we're now, we've got that program to a point now where it's been conceptualized, and we're actually looking at deploying that in New Jersey as part of our, getting a license there, which we don't have today, but it's a big part of getting a license there. So it's a really neat program.
Thank you.
Question, Mr. Parra. In regards to employment, how many people are you willing to commit to of hiring from the city of Balden Park?
How many you got for us?
You say you had about 10, 10 positions, right? I just wanna get a rough idea, man, of how many, how many people are you willing to give employment to from our city, man?
I'd say of, of, I'll go for 40%, how's that?
That sounds beautiful. And also, can we get your participation in helping out in local, local programs, schools, and all that?
Yeah, I'm very open to that. It's, yeah, it's scholastics, teaching's a big part of our game, part of how we're positioning ourselves as a, as a company, so.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Parra.
I'd like to, to piggyback off of that a little bit. Obviously, we know the marijuana business, the cultivating and the whatnot is a very big business. It's, it's been making a lot of money, so it'd be very important that philanthropic efforts are put in, within the community, especially that we do have, you know, programs that do need it. That'd be really great.
Yeah, it's, you, you just made me, for the first time, you don't know about my company, but in, in New Jersey, it's very important to that state that you come in with a very strong social justice program. You're not messing around, or in that, in that state, you have to come, strong social justice program. So we've engaged local community engagement professionals who are actually investors in our company too, they're leading us in that, in that area. And we brought in, you know, big sports figures, former NFL giants, to help be the face of that program. I say that just so you can understand of how important this is to me and my company.
Perfect, that sounds great, thank you. And just to kind of reiterate as well, when she was asking about education and whatnot and trade programs, maybe in the future, if you guys do set ground here in our community, work with our local community colleges or universities to help expand education and spark some students to pursue a math or a science degree.
We'd love to support that.
Any other questions or concerns, Commissioners?
I do, Madam Chair, I'm sorry, it was mentioned, whichever of you two are from Balden Park, graduate from Balden Park?
I grew up here in Balden Park, went, everything from Geddes, Geddes to Holland Junior High to Balden Park High School.
And, and, I'm sorry, I didn't get your name?
My name is Juan Mondragon.
Juan Mondragon. So you, you obviously grew up in our community, you know what our community needs. And before I kind of move on, what is your role here with the company?
Again, more of a community, community kind of person.
I can't hear you.
More of a community person, because I grew up here. And that's why it was, it was important to me, this, this vertical farming initiative. It's something that you can educate people, it's about learning not only about growing food, but also how it works, how much sun you need, how to, we talked about the water, you know, the dripping system, how to minimize the use of water, how, you know, how to work, how to work maximize the growth of the plant, or plants, with minimal water use, minimal land. Again, vertical farming, I think is, is the future, there's a lot of businesses growing in that range. I think that's something you can, you know, educate the community on. People can grow their own foods. I mean, I grew up here with my dad, you know, having 16 trees in the backyard. We had fruit and everything, so I think it's, it's a good transition into someplace where I think there's a lot of capital being invested. You can, you know, an education can go a long way there.
Right. So just to kind of clarify, what is your involvement again with the company?
I'm, I'm, I guess, well, I'll speak for me. Juan is, is, is going to be CFO of this company. Juan is, is, is going to be CFO of this company. He's going to help me build this organization. He's going to play the leading role in terms of engaging with the city. He's going to be kind of our front person engaging with the city. That answer your question?
Part of my question. So Juan, the question to you is, as a person that grew up in this community, went to our schools, can you commit to us and our commissioners and our community that you're willing to work? As my commissioners here, colleagues asked, you know, there's a lot of things that our community know, needs, our education, vocational training, there's many things. Are you committed to bring that as the CFO of this company?
Yeah, of course. We, I think we want to maximize our, our help to the community. I think there is a lot, you know, growing up here, and I was just here two, I think, two councils ago, and you hear about, you know, people going hungry sleeping in their cars, high school students who are sleeping in their cars. I heard a lot of things that weren't very, you know, positive, I guess. And that's just the circumstances of the economy and COVID and what we're in. And so, yes, I hear what you're saying. We need to kind of roll up our sleeves and get involved with the community and provide, you know, help, not only with education, but if we can commit resources, we're happy to commit resources also, depending on, you know, what the city needs. And where we can be of service and help. I mean, I think part of that is in our application. You know, helping like the senior, the senior, you know, group here at the park, Morgan Park. So I think something I think we put in our application. So we're, we're interested in, in rolling up our sleeves and working with the community.
Here's another thing I'd like to add on, because obviously a lot of the community has a misconception of cultivation and whatnot, about bringing in some educational programs or workshops for the community where you can teach the community of what it is that you guys are actually doing. So they don't just assume that you guys are dispensaries.
Happy to do that. It's a whole lot of work, you know, a nice little presentation.
Perfect. Thank you. Any other comments, questions, concerns?
On the, for staff, or for staff, on the application, a review of the applicants, on section A, excuse me, on, I'm sorry, on section B, question four, where it says, name and address of school close to a particular location. It mentions Tracy Elementary, but where it's not Tracy Elementary, should be Deansay Elementary. It's, you're aware that Deansay Elementary is the closest school to your, the lady you're asking?
I do not. Luis, are you on the, is Luis on the phone?
No, he's not.
So I guess my question to you is, when you apply for the position, or yourself or your staff, did you guys do your, your research in finding out what schools were around, what homes were around? Because, I mean, if I'm submitting an application, I want to make sure that we have the accurate information.
Absolutely. We confirmed that there are no schools closer than 600 feet, which was the requirement.
Anything else? Any other questions, comments?
Madam Chair, I do have, just want to make note that I did receive an email. I did bring my, my work phone so that I would have access to emails. And there was an email of concern that was submitted within the time allotted to submit, what would require for you to open public communication. I'd be more than happy to read it, which I can't disseminate it to you guys, but it's in electronic form.
Okay, perfect. Do you want me to reopen public communications? Okay, so then at this moment, I'll go ahead and reopen public hearing.
Okay, received a email from Marcela Leon. "Good evening. I disagree with this building to be used as it will not be useful by residents in Baldwin Park. This can cause more harm than to be helpful. As our family have been living at this neighborhood for over 30 years, this is something I don't want my grandkids around. Also, this building will have odors which can cause health issues and will bring creatures to residences."
Thank you.
Actually, Madam Chair, I have another question for the applicants. Gentlemen, can you share with us, what did you guys do to reach out to the community? Not sure if you guys are ready to share that with us, but can you guys share that with us? Maybe Juan, can you, can you share that with us?
Sorry, can you repeat the question, please?
What did you guys do to reach out to the community that you guys were coming in, were looking to ask for a permit here in our city to do business?
What brought us to Baldwin Park and how we plan to reach out to the community? Is that the question?
Have you guys reached out to the community already?
Part of the application process, I believe we have to send a mailer out, and that mailer was sent out to all local businesses around us. Beyond that, we haven't done anything yet because frankly, I wasn't sure if I was going to get a license.
Any other questions, comments?
Madam Chair, probably be appropriate to close the public.
Yes, and I'll go ahead and close out the public hearing at this moment. Thank you.
So actually, I do have a question or two additional questions, just based off of what we just heard from the written email. I'm not sure if the individual's looking at YouTube right now or just watching this, but, you know, I feel that I already have just sort of enough knowledge from this presentation and prior training, but I'm hoping if you can tell us a little bit more, at least just two main concerns. One, again, bear with us, I know you've already sort of mentioned this, but one is how you would be useful to the residents as this individual doesn't believe, or is under the impression that that's not the case. And then two, again, maybe just sort of assurances, again, of just sort of the air quality preventing odor, strong odors from around the residence, and also preventing, I suppose, animals or anything like that coming just to the area.
On the odor mitigation piece of it, at a very basic level, the facility, entire facility, that box is sealed. And how we approach growing is we do basically a box within a box. So we have a sealed room that we build, and then we grow within that room. So those are just your natural barriers that we create. And then we have carbon scrubbers all over the entire facility so that air is constantly being cleaned or mitigating that from coming out of those four walls. That, you know, largely gets rid of, gets rid of your odor. The other things that you can do operationally within the facility to mitigate that, including, you know, yeah. The question, what was the first part of that question?
Sure, the first question, I think, was a little bit more subjective of how do you, so I believe she believes that you might not be useful for the community, but I guess sort of switching it, how would you be useful? And I know we've talked a little bit more about commitments, et cetera, but for the sake, assuming that she's watching this.
For the first time, understood. Okay, yeah, so I think to adjust that concern is, yeah, so it's about initiatives. How we become beneficial to the community is that we're doing things for the community, such as the Controlled Environmental Agricultural Program, where we're literally teaching, teaching the community, people who, that want to or that are interested, to learn how to grow indoors in an indoor environment, learning how to irrigate their plants, learning how to use various nutrients to get to optimize their plants. And so that, you know, in and of itself is a benefit to the community, I think.
Great, thank you. And thank you for also using layman's terms for the mitigation examples.
I have one last question for you. So obviously, the big concern for the community has been safety and how it's going to impact the communities where you'll be coming in. Going back a little bit, I know you mentioned you have other businesses in different areas. How has it been there safety-wise? Have you had any issues?
Yeah, so the one off of Gage and the South Central, we've never been attacked. Not even close, not even attempted. And then for my other operation, you know, it would, we'd get attacked on a regular basis. But it was in a really bad area, and that's where I really learned about security and third-party service. Did I answer your question?
It does, but by attack, can you elaborate a little bit on when you're being attacked? What is it that they're doing to you?
They'll come three, three, five cars deep, guys will jump out and rush the building. And so, you know, it's, it's a very uneasy situation for the guy who's holding the gun behind the door. And like I said, I, we figured out through that, those processes, those experiences that having a third-party firm looking at you all the time and literally getting on the speaker and telling, "Mr. Perpetrator, we have, you know, five sheriff cars coming immediately over a loud, you know, blaring speaker that diffuses the situation, and then you never got to shoot the guy."
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, concerns?
No. I just want to say, I want to, I want to say thank you for coming up and sharing with us everything. It gives me peace of mind. I grew up in LA, so I know the areas you're talking about. When you say Gage, I don't know what the cross streets are, but if you're saying South Central, I grew up in South Central, so.
Okay, you know how it is.
I know exactly what you're talking about. So the imminent threat is, is, I would say it's a lot higher in Los Angeles than it would be here. I think we have a good police department here that's always ready, be on alert for, for any situations like that. So I have peace of mind in that area. So thank you for sharing with us.
Thank you.
One last question. Why did you guys choose Baldwin Park?
I grew up 10 minutes from here. This is coming home for me. I didn't want to put it like that to you guys, but it is. I grew up on La Rosa and Rosemary Boulevard, so right between Temple City and Rosemary. And I met this guy on Wall Street. Didn't meet him here, I went to him on Wall Street. So we wanted to do a project together. I mean, this is my business, he hasn't been in the business. So this is a project that we're going to do together, and yeah, it's, it's local. So I couldn't do it in Temple City. Temple City doesn't have an ordinance, they're not going to have an ordinance. I bypassed, I chose Baldwin Park, so it's going to be home for a while.
Thank you.
Well, Chair, if there's no other questions from commissioners, I'd like to make a motion and move this ordinance forward.
Second.
All right, you got a second? Can we go ahead and take a vote, please?
I'm sorry, can you repeat this, who second? Thank you. I'll take a roll. Commissioner Peña?
Yes.
Commissioner Vasquez?
No.
Commissioner Escobosa?
Yes.
Vice Chair, Marcel Junior?
Yes.
Madam Chair, Valenzuela?
Yes.
Motion passes for one.
Thanks again for coming up, guys.
Again, just to, this item, final action is by the city council, a tentative scheduled for December 1st for a first reading. Notices of public hearing will also be sent to everyone within 300 feet of the property, again, as notified for the planning commission.
Perfect, thank you. At this moment, I'll go ahead and ask for a report of officers. Okay. And any last communications from the commissioner staff?
I just want to advise the commissioners that I know we're, we're at the end of 2021. So the remainder of the year, it looks like we don't have any meetings scheduled for the remainder of the year. If it, if an item did get scheduled, that meeting would be on December, sorry, hold on one second, would be December 8th. I do have a tentative, but as of now, it does not look concrete. But otherwise, we would be seeing each other, probably second meeting in January or first meeting in February.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
So that means don't schedule any vacation time around that, eh?
Unless excused by the commissioner.
I wonder if it would be appropriate for me to acknowledge that tomorrow is Veterans Day. And so if there are any veterans in our community participating in the YouTube, I would like to thank you for your service.
You, Jen? I'll second that one, too.
Yes, thank you to all of our veterans. Any other comments, communications? All right, I seen it. So then I'd like to go ahead and move motion to adjourn today's meeting.
I'll second it. Any objections?
Okay, time is 8:13. Good night, everybody.
Night, everyone.